Tuesday, May sixth, two thousand twenty five, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. This month's school recognition is for East Middle School, and at this time I'd like to call forward Principal Michael Holland.
Good evening. It's great to be back with you again this year, and I promise to keep it short because the group of all of you is an outstanding group of young men that have drawn home the city championships. So I know you're going to be much more excited to see that than some old guy standing up here today. But I'm really excited today to talk to you because it's really a continuation from my presentation last year. Some of you were here last year, and you recall that we made significant changes to our academic schedule to try to foster a better environment for student achievements. And so I'm happy to report back on how that change went specifically with regards to honoring or putting the spotlight on some really, really strong teacher leaders that have taken the bull by the horn and really pushed student performance forward. So really, in my quick celebration here tonight, we were focusing on some teacher leaders that have really done an outstanding job. So I'm really excited to speak on their behalf. Ultimately, one of the things that we needed to do and we needed to recognize was to bring our PLC work a step further, further along in the process. And so, and our SLT team at the end of last year identified that as a goal, which is posted in front of you. And the idea to implement a very strong guiding coalition to support that PLC process. And so today, in my brief time with you, I want to talk about the guiding coalition and the work that they have done at East Middle School, all on behalf of the students that have shown great growth because of the process. So, maybe, there we go. Over the last several years, and this was supposed to be quoted, so it's all there at once, but I'm going to do my own thing. So, but over the last several years, as you know, the district as a whole and us at East Middle Schools as well have really made a strong effort in the PLC process. And the PLC process, looking at students, identifying them as individuals, recognizing what we need to do to help them have academic success. And so one of the things we did notice was that we needed to have effective PLT. And PLT stands for Professional Learning Team. And in order to have professional learning teams, which are faculty that are working collaboratively together, working on authentic student work, and making decisions based on the students in front of them, you need a group of people to lead them. And ultimately, that's what the guiding coalition is. They're young, not young, they are people who are, I don't know if they're so young, some of them are not so young. But they are a group of people, now they're all mad at me. But ultimately, at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is collaborate, as you can see up there, in recurring cycles, right, and consistently and methodically working through a system to identify student work, identify their performance, and then identify what we can do as educators to help those students who aren't getting it to master those standards, and those that are getting it to extend their learning for them, to enrich them even further. And in order to do that, it became very clear to us that as the principal of the school, I can't be the one doing that work because I'm not sitting with kids every single day. I'm not the practitioner in the field, I'm not the one sitting at the desk with kids every single day. And so in order to do that, we recognized we really had to bring our guiding coalition to the next level. And the guiding coalition, ultimately, and their last quote, a very relevant quote I found, that kind of mirrors what we were thinking, the idea that senior leaders cannot implement change alone. They need partners who have organizational expertise and credibility. The credibility piece is huge, I'm going to build on that in a second. But for us to have effective teacher leaders, we have to have people who have four types of power, right? The idea of power of position, power of expertise, power of credibility, and a power of leadership ability. Those are four traits that you need to have if people are going to authentically and effectively lead this work. And so we talked about power of position, it has to be a person that has the ability to make decisions system-wide, right? So you need some level of person that sits on the committee that has the ability to make a decision that can affect the entire building. Expertise, credibility, and leadership ability are where the strong teacher leaders come in. Because you need to be an expert in your craft, you need to understand your curriculum, you need to understand your methodology, you need to understand what is it going to take to move students forward. But you also have to be credible, you have to be somebody that people look to and recognize, oh, yeah, that teacher is a very credible person, if she's saying this, I need to listen, I might not necessarily agree, but there's a sense of credibility with that person. And the idea of being a leader is a visionary, right? When we talk about leadership in this category, anyone can make a decision to do something, but if you're a visionary, you're looking forward, and you lead with that vision, then you can truly move students forward. So with all that criteria in mind, I was very fortunate to put together a very strong coalition of teachers and some administrators for that positional power as well. And you'll notice my name is not on it, I am not part of our guiding coalition. Our assistant principals and our department chair, Jackie Scallon, bring positional leadership to the committee. But the first teachers that, or the group of teachers that I just said at the beginning of this, Kelsey, Connor, Tiffany, Christina, Samara, are the true practitioners. So that's a true celebration in my presentation, because they are actively working to lead change. They are actively working to increase student performance at East Middle School. And their process is, as I said, very systematic, it is very clear. Every single Wednesday, that group meets, and when they meet as a leadership team, they talk about their individual PLTs, because each of them lead a content-based PLT, Professional Learning Team. So at East Middle School, when we change our schedule, as I talked about last year, our teachers have the ability to meet every single day by content period. Sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade English teachers, as an example, can meet every day vertically and horizontally planned. Could not do that before until we made that significant change. And by making that change and creating that time for those teachers to work together, they are able to bounce ideas off one another, if they have something that didn't really work for them, how did you do this because your kids did really well, I'm struggling with that. They had that collaboration built into their schedule based on the change that we did last year. And the idea of the guiding coalition is that they meet every Wednesday, provide feedback on the previous routine, because the next day they need their formal PLT work with their content teachers based on what they're doing, where they are in their cycle, right, and I'm going to talk about that in a second. But they have that ability to meet with one another, to look at authentic student work, to see, is this student making the standard, are they not making the standard, what can I do differently if they're not making that standard, but all the time going back to a very dedicated leadership group that is leading this work because they are visionaries, they recognize that we need to do something different. And the fact that my name is not on there is very intentional, because this group, mostly Nicole and Michelle, will report back to me, update me how's it going, what do they need, if there's anything I need to do. And I also go if they invite, sometimes they need me there, so they'll invite me to the meeting, and the assistant principals will cover my duties at that time, and I will actually go to the meeting. But I'm not at all, I come in when they have a question or they need something with some more clarity in it. But the idea of the entire guiding coalition is to put the leadership and put the power to the teachers that are actually doing the work, right? So that's a big stretch and it's a big change, but it's been very beneficial for us at school. So ultimately, oops, I went too far, sorry. So ultimately, everything I've been talking about with the guiding coalition is taking that time that we crafted into the schedule to answer the fundamental four questions of PLC work, right? This is what the district has been committed to for many, many years, the idea of what is it that we want our students to learn? How are we going to know if they learned it? What will we do if they haven't learned it? And what are we going to do if they already do know it, right? So without a guiding coalition and without the opportunity to have PLT work, this breaks down. Because you have to, first of all, identify this understanding, then you have to assess it, figure out whether or not the students hit it or not. But then, and a big change from when I know when I first started teaching, or when we all first, some of us more veteran people first start teaching, if they didn't learn it, it was, oh, well, I moved on to the next topic anyway. Well, now, because we have that period of time crafted into our schedule, it's not, oh, well, they didn't get it. It's, what are we going to do because they didn't get what we determined to be essential? And so the teachers can collaboratively work during the day to figure out, why did you do so well, Dr. Penn? Why did your kids do so well in this, and my kids did so poorly? Talk to me how you did that. Oh, okay, and I can go back and reteach, because we're not just going to leave and get behind and continue to push through as we used to do in the past. So really, ultimately, what we've been able to do, and our heavy focus right now is on that bottom right corner, we're still learning and moving into the extension period, what are we going to do if they already know it? We're not quite there yet, but we're working on that. Well, ultimately, and I put up a data point for you to see that the, maybe, there we go, that the process is working, this graphic is a little bit hard to see, but ultimately, what I put up there for you was an English PLT work, and so a sixth grade standard, seventh grade standard, and the eighth grade standard that was measured on our first CFA at the beginning of the year and then mid-year. And one of the things I want to point out is, because we took the time to stop, we took the time to work together as teachers, the kids that didn't get it, when that standard was tested a second time because we went back and re-taught it, you'd notice the increase in green across the board, right? So the green in all those columns are students that met the standard, the yellow is approaching standard, and the red is students who did not meet that standard. So in the past, prior to PLC work, prior to having a strong guiding coalition, to lead a strong PLT, we were just kept pushing forward. But you can see by this graph of our students, this is this year's actual authentic data, students that didn't meet it, we re-taught it, and every one of the averages went up, and all of the greens continued to improve, because the teachers worked together to figure out what more students need, how can we bring more students along, rather than prior teaching like we used to do, you just focused so hard on moving forward, moving forward, moving forward. And so because of the strong teacher leadership and the strong teachers that are working collaboratively during the day, we're actually seeing growth across the board. And so, and I was told to keep it short, I'm trying to keep it short. So as a continuation of last year, right, where we changed the schedule so that we could have teacher collaboration, here is evidence that the teacher collaboration is working. Here is evidence that we have ways to go, I don't pretend that we don't, but the system and the process is working because, A, there's dedicated time, B, there's an expectation to be meeting during that time. And most importantly, what my celebration was tonight was for those visionary teachers that took a step forward and changed the way that they were teaching and the way that they were thinking, and then are guiding their peers along the same path. So the guiding coalition, the PLT work, everything that you're supporting in Board of Education and Dr. Thompson is supporting as our superintendent of schools, is showing real-time results at East Middle School. And so I really wanted to celebrate the kids, I really wanted to celebrate the work that they are doing. But ultimately, today I wanted to focus on some great visionary teachers that stepped up and took change, because it was hard when we changed the schedule, but they took that change and they ran with it, and we're seeing results. So that's our celebration. So I appreciate your time, I could answer some questions, if you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them.
Michael, just want to congratulate on the success and the structure that you've put in place. We assume that this is going to continue, the amount of teachers come and go, the guiding coalition will be in place.
Yes, the guiding coalition is in place.
The structure is in place.
I'm sorry, yes, so the guiding coalition is in place, they're committed to continue that. Actually, they're the same leadership room, we're actually expanding our time in our PLT work so that there are a couple of subjects that sixth grade couldn't meet with seventh and eighth grade, so we made a couple more adjustments to our schedule for next year, so now all sixth, seventh, and eighth grade content teachers will be meeting together under the leadership of that organization.
Thank you. Are you seeing the similar progress in all the subjects? Or is there a certain subject that needs a little more than others, or?
Yes, sure, that's a great question. So all the, all, yes, the easy answer is yes, all of the students are improving. There are different stages of improvement, the English is, they're a little bit ahead of the game with regards to the PLC process and the work and collaboration, because they have been doing it a little bit longer, so they're a little bit ahead, but all content areas, we're seeing progress on some of them.
Actually, I think the progress I'm seeing red to yellow is just as important as seeing some of the green.
Absolutely, I appreciate that, yeah, it's very true, the idea that, because like, as we know, in the past we've never focused on, if they didn't get it full well, I thought, I tell them the way we used to do it, oh, maybe you can teach this, so we need to go back and look at it. It works, for sure. It takes some time to get there, but you have to, it takes time, it takes a lot, like, when we first did it, and I was trying to lead the work, and I was the wrong person to lead the work, which I'm not going to say that again, right? So I had to recognize that, and take the step back, I had to trust other people to provide that leadership. But when you get to that level, when you get that dedicated time, you get the right people leading the work, and it makes it work. But it takes time, it definitely takes time.
Thank you. For individuals interested in becoming part of the guiding coalition, if they don't possess the four types of power that you mentioned, what is being done to prepare them for that teacher?
Sure, so I'm possibly looking to put teachers into leadership positions, and those teachers come into very different groups and different activities, they are shared leadership team, which is a much larger group, it could be a teacher leader who lives in a normal department, but teachers that have come with the identity, hey, I want to be part of this, and then we talk to them, we talk about how they're doing it, what they want to do to work. And it's not a stagnant group, it could be through it, it could be moving, but teachers that want to step up and take the leadership role, they're willing to do that, so we try to work with them and encourage them. It's not as if like, we sit there with like, check out, nope, I'm sorry, this and this, and you can't be part of it. No, we work and try to find people who are the best who are doing it.
I have a question. Has this, which is a great idea, I really appreciate the change, has this impacted your ability to get through the curriculum?
It did. I would say yes, a little bit, right now, I think it's slowing it down a little bit right now, and I think it's okay, because what they've done, what the work that's been done with Dr. Thompson and Dr. Doug is the idea of looking at this vast curriculum, right, which is, I mean, I've taught American history, I've never made it again, right, ever, I'm going here, but here's what is essential for my kids' learning. So if I'm a seventh grade English teacher, what does my student have to have to be successful in eighth grade, right? So, yep, I'm supposed to read eight novels, okay, well, I only wrote Red Five, however, these are the essential standards that we've identified, and they go standard. So if they can meet the standard, that's more important to me as a principal than it is if I covered X amount of novels and keeping the English, right? So it has slowed it down, so absolutely, math teachers struggle with that, right? The math teachers are in stories, they've got to get over it, but the ability to take applause and recognize is truly important for our kids, that lifelong skill, that lifelong academic skill, that's going to hopefully lead to success for them through high school and wherever. So it's definitely sort of helped, I would not be counting you in.
But you've also explained what you've done in the conference, so that's fantastic, thank you.
Well, thank you all very much, and I'm very excited for you to be here.
The next item on the agenda is this month's Patriot Pride Award, and I'd like to call forward our state champion basketball team.
So I'm going to read Patriot Pride Award, so you can this out, we have a number of our community, whether it be a student, a parent, a teacher, administrator, who has made the district accept my pride, and it was a great pleasure, I read this too. So to the Binghamton High School Boys Basketball Team for its remarkable achievement in a historic victory in the twenty twenty-five New York State Class AA Championship, a program's first since nineteen eighty-six, and for creating the opportunity for the school district, and more importantly, the entire Binghamton community to come together, to support one another, and to celebrate it. It is still being talked about, it's been talked about before, what you guys did on that court was incredible, but what made us proud, I said this at the beginning of the season, I know I said it, no matter if you win or lose, but how you played the game and how you demonstrated what it is to be a Patriot, those are, those are history. So congratulations on the victory, Coach. The president's going to read to you the order to be, actually, in the words there.
Resolution honoring the Binghamton High School Boys Basketball Team. Whereas the Binghamton High School Boys Basketball Team has demonstrated exceptional skill, teamwork, support, and commitment throughout the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five basketball season, culminating in the two thousand twenty-five New York State Class AA Championship, a program's first since nineteen eighty-six. And whereas this victory not only showcases the talent of our student athletes, but also reflects the tremendous support of the coaches, parents, and the entire school community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Binghamton City School District Board of Education officially recognizes and congratulates the High School Boys Basketball Team for its remarkable achievement in winning the state championship. And to get further resolved, the board expresses its appreciation to the coaches, staff, cheerleaders, and families who contributed to the team's success. Congratulations to that, I'm very proud of you.
I'm a patriot, and it's about academic, it's incredibly strong, I understand, Friday night, I've heard it from their coaching team, you have other students that are eight seniors, eight women in college, you sell our athletes as well, I'll send you this. So thank you for all your work on the court, and I look forward to the season, and I also want to give it to you. I don't give you the apple to turn around. Your teammates and your field coaches.
That's for real.
We just, we just want to say thank you guys for all the support, and I guess this is a hot, but I was just going to add. Thank you for all the support, we appreciate it, we've noticed and seen you guys everywhere we've been, and this thing has been such a journey, and we're so grateful that we've been able to share it with everybody, and this means a lot, and I heard that the state tournament's back in Binghamton next year, so we're just going to try to go share it.
Thank you.
So, just on that point, you know, Emmy has the five, they're active about this, something in Binghamton? The mayor, the mayor's on this, they're working for us on the banner. On his, they, that would be exciting, yes. Some are working on that, I also, they had a conversation with that, so they had a question on the highlight, which is on. That's it, I heard you were going to that, I heard there was a lot of people working there, and people will leave, keep together. Exactly. And what is honoring the team, the work of the Senate, as well, so that they travel to each other. They were also honored at, after the great, also.
Before we move on to the next item on the agenda, actually, we have one more recognition presentation. Last Saturday night, we had the ceremony for the Binghamton University Alumni Association Special Recognition Awards. And one of the honorees that night was a very own Mary Ann Callahan, a member of Binghamton's class of nineteen ninety-one, who received the Edward Wyspen Distinguished Alumni Award for Public Service and Contribution in Public Affairs in recognition of the tremendous work she has done to help refugees, and she spent nine years in Afghanistan on USA Project, that was tremendous, and has come back to Binghamton afterward, but afterward, of course, is here now on the Board of Education and is involved with numerous projects, both citywide within the first ward. So I wanted to present you with a photograph from the ceremony last Saturday, this is me, you, and the Alumni Association President, who will be presenting you with the trophy. So congratulations, we're very proud of you. Now to the approval of the minutes from the work session that the regular meeting held Tuesday, April fifteenth. I'm sorry, I skipped ahead, we will have the first of our public conference portions of the meeting. As usual, the process is you get three minutes to come up and speak, come up to state your name, and you'll have three minutes, if your discussion topic requires further follow-up, we can handle that afterwards. You can contact the district clerk, Sandra Brown, at brownss@binghamschools.org. We are not permitted by law to discuss matters specific to staff concerns or student matters. So with that said, whoever it is that would like to come up and speak first, please approach the podium, and you will have three minutes.
Hello, I'm John Solak. This neighborhood is in horrific shape. It's fallen apart, if you use time elapsed photography, it has never been worse. And who owns all this slum property now? The city of Binghamton, that's the difference between now and then. The city of Binghamton has become the largest owner of slum property in this city. Are you concerned about it? I am. This is an insult to everything that was trying to be accomplished. So I, I, give me a break. So I, 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 give me a break. I noticed that the meeting, uh, seven twelve or seven thirteen, uh, began at that seven thirteen scheduled for seven o'clock. What happens to a student if a student is thirteen minutes early? Just, just walk in and that's it? Because it was a big thing when I was a kid. How'd you like that Trump? It was a big thing when I was a kid. Payments and lieu of taxes, the university's killing this town, is absolutely killing this town. I think it's amazing that in a small city such as Utica, the professors sided in with the people that were clamoring for more pilot, more payments and lieu of taxes. And in this town, there's nothing, absolutely nothing. The university's destroyed Binghamton and its tax base, and it's destroyed Johnson City. They're working on N D I two. Foundation's got a lot of money to buy a lot of property, and it doesn't give you one damn nickel. So it takes leadership, it takes somebody to say, hey, come up with the hula. You know, no city in this country with nonprofit activity, Boston. You think Boston can operate without, uh, payments and lieu of taxes? If Dana Harvard said no, if Harvard said no, you, you think they could? They couldn't operate for a minute. This city is a disaster. And a bad example by all this student drinking downtown. You know, when I was a kid, you could walk and see suits and ties and go into the merchants and, you know, students were welcome depending on what the, the store sold. But there's nothing to look up to here. You got high school students walking by these student housing with all these parties. What kind of example is that? Look, there's good, there's high class, believe it or not, you can be palace, town can be high class. But I hate to tell you, this ain't Chapel Hill. This is an amateur hour. And that university up there is a closed circuit that doesn't care if the people that live in this town live or die. Oh, yeah, we can all put on a miniskirt, uh, uh, come out with chicken wings. That, that's our role in this community. Well, I say to hell with that, absolute hell with that. And I say it's time that this ivory tower up there that's telling you how great they are, come up with some cash for this town. And people are too cowardly. And all these frauds that they perpetrated, I am three New York, they're all behind it, batteries, batteries, batteries. Another bankruptcy. We need another bankruptcy at a hall head. So let's get with it, let's start telling it like it is. Because look, when people say, we need more time, it didn't happen overnight, we need more time, it's coming, it's coming. They're not only wasting your money, they're wasting your time. I haven't got another five years on this planet, in this city, anywhere. But in, uh, what's that, uh, Undertaker over there? I, I haven't got that time, I can't wait any longer, I wanna see results. Finally, on my Twitter page, at Binghamton Daily, you will see a study that was done in nineteen nineteen, the year my parents were born, about problems in the city school district. And guess what? All the same problems are here today and none of them, none of them have solved. Read that survey and tell me that you've solved one damn problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Would anyone else like to come and speak before the board? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close to this public comment period of the board meeting and move on to the approval of minutes from the work session and regular meeting held April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Does that have a motion to approve and accept the minutes? Move by Harry, seconded by Albert, hold a favor.
Aye.
Aye. And it takes us to a presentation on the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six budget with Dr. Thompson and Dr. Dove to be immediately followed by a public hearing on the budget.
As Dr. Dove sets up the, the presentation, um, to, to, to share this evening, I just wanted to give what I'm hearing from New York State school boards and New York State House of Schools superintendents in terms of a, in terms of a state budget and clarity around, um, state aid for Binghamton. Um, we're, we're hearing that a deal has been made, but no details in terms of what that means for school finance. My understanding is that there, there's more money being placed in the executive, um, budget, but no details around that. Because the state failed to provide that information to us in a timely manner, to meet the law, to go out with, you know, what we would be actually getting, we're moving forward with the executive proposal. In the event that we receive more money than the state, um, has indicated in the executive proposal, we'll still obtain that money, we cannot spend it, we cannot exceed what we're going out to the public for in terms of our, our bottom line. Um, so what we'll be looking at the end of the year is where can that money go to in terms of reserves to support, um, what we're using this year, the reserves moving into next year. So, uh, as soon as I hear more, I'll inform the board, you know, week or next meeting. Um, but just so that you have a sense of what's happening, usually our legislators are very good about, um, informing leadership about, it's been posted, go look here, this is, this is your final, you know, bottom line. So with that, I'm gonna turn over to Dr. Dove, who's gonna take us through the budget that's presented last, last week, or last month, rather, um, once again.
Okay, so just a review of last month's presentation. So again, the goals behind the budget planning process that Dr. Thompson has shared with us the last several months. Again, this is the maximum allowable tax levying limit, just to remind you of what that looks like.
Uh, Jennifer, I could just interject. In our budget newsletter, uh, we broke that down a little further, uh, for the taxpayers to understand that because there are two pilots that are, um, coming back on, on roles, that a point seven four percent of that tax levy is represented by those pilots. So the remainder of that tax levy is what will literally be applied to the, to the taxpayers. Kind of an important fact. And also, sorry, um, as we discussed last month in the budget newsletter, we also included, um, timeline across, um, tax levies, as suggested by the board.
The ten, the ten-year tax levy that you suggested last month. So this is the three-part budget summary. So again, the, the administrative component that includes our central business office expenses, personnel, superintendent's office, school building principals, and office staff. And it also includes liability insurance, printing costs, and other aspects around legal costs. The program budget is the largest expense, which is all of the, um, running of our schools for our students. And then the capital budget includes buildings and grounds, security, and debt related to capital projects. This is the three-part budget summary broken out, so you can see it in more detail. In the other special items there in the middle, that, again, the reminder is that includes the Boce's administration and the capital charges. And the increase that we see there is mostly related to the Boce's capital project that Boce's came and presented on and that the, um, public voted on. And so again, this cost is offset with additional Boce's aid that we get back and a small amount that flows to the tax levy as approved by the region-wide vote. So this is the second of three years for this, um, expense. Sometimes it wants to work, sometimes it doesn't, thank you all. And so then this is the, um, program component of the three-part budget. The other district transportation line, that includes a portion of salaries for in-district administration and secretaries related to transportation. And again, this is the capital component of the three budget survey. And so we'll see that the operations and maintenance is decreasing, not only to the expected cost savings by some of the reductions we're able to make, but also the shift of free individuals to the cafeteria fund, which also helped us to reduce. The debt service we see is increasing, but so is the building aid, and so those offset. So here you see the balanced, balanced budget with the expenditures and the revenues. And this is what it would look like, um, with a contingency budget. So hopefully we won't have to entertain that contingency budget because it's not great for education and everything that we're trying to do. And this is the remaining timeline, we started in January with the, um, round table. And so now this is the budget hearing tonight, and then we have the budget vote on May twentieth.
One other thing that's a little different this year than past budget hearings is we've usually included the contract for excellence portion in the budget hearing because that portion, which came into play, like that in twenty twelve, I think, where it was set aside money, specific money used for specific purposes, also required, um, a, a, a public hearing to be able to present to the board and be posted on the website. Fortunately, the state has some, uh, done lot of allocations for that yet, because they haven't got the budget. So that will come out later today.
Last year that happened to us as well. So we did that public hearing in June, I believe, so. Any questions?
And with that, we'll proceed to the public hearing on the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six budget. And the rules will be the same as for any of the public comment portions of the meeting, where you have three minutes to come up and speak, state your name, you'll have three minutes. And that in mind, anybody who wants to come up and speak is welcome to do so.
John Solak. This budget has grown and the debt service is alarming. And you know how it works, the transfer payments are subject to change. Everything as far as debt goes is on this district, on this district. It's a year-to-year thing. With the federal transfer payments, uh, now in question, uh, that balance sheet is pretty bad. You know, I, uh, I spoke out against the MacArthur School project. And I spoke out against it because it was ugly. The building was ugly, the design was horrible. And I questioned whether the signing was gonna hold. This is all a matter of public record. And look what you got, you got an eyesore. You got an eyesore that's relatively new, that looks like it's been there for sixty years. So old John was right on that one. Now, as far as election integrity goes, that's a big issue now. Uh, you know, when the MacArthur School vote came up, I, uh, I voted both yes and no. And then I came here and I watched them count the votes. And I got up that day and I said, is that it? Is that the full total, you've got no other votes? And, uh, they said, yeah, that's it. Oh, well, by the way, I voted both yes and no, and I voted in St. Andrews. Well, the secretary, the administrative aide called me up the next day and said, well, we found your vote. So you see, you can always do a channel check on whether things are on the level or not. I don't think this district, well, look, I was at Johnson City the other month and they found five million dollars, they, they just got five million dollars, they weren't counting them. What a shame. Oh, happy day. What I would do to make it right here, and, and by the way, the, the students have a cardboard copy of the periodic table of elements. And do you, do you give them that at least for a hundred and twenty, however many millions of this is? Do they have that? Because it's an interesting thing, you know? You know, I, I mean, they got copper pen and, and there's copper, you know? It, I don't understand it. You, you've got to go back, uh, to some of these tried and true educational models that work. School starts too early in this district. I, when I, on, on a rare occasion, when I get up and I see these kids, I mean, young kids, going around and around and around before they ever get to this classroom. I said, ah, these people are iron men, they're iron kids. I mean, how can they do it? They gotta be beat before they step off the bus. There was a lady that used to come here for ten or twenty years and she talked about, you know, teenagers and starting school later because, you know, that's, that's just a fact. I mean, what are we doing to these kids for crying out loud? I mean, I don't know. So what I would do is I would, as I said on the earlier panel, I would collect the payments and lieu of taxes. I'd put pressure on Binghamton University, I would just go tomorrow. And I make them look like the bands that they are. The next thing I would do is I'd get to the city and say, we don't wanna hear any, we've got all these boarded up buildings here, what's the plan? You got the one across from the high school, how long's that been in bad shape? You know, the idea was gonna rescue that one. I mean, it's a joke, you got the Sonic Temple. I mean, this is, this is, this is horrible. I mean, you know, at least this, the, the set of West Side Story, you know, it's supposed to be a ghetto, but it's, but it's charmed, it looks good on film. This doesn't look good on film, the Sonic Temple and all this stuff. So, and I remember one year with the, the other mayor, they were, they were, they didn't like the way things were going in this district, you know? It was all this district swap that was taking down the city. Well, I'll tell you something, the way I feel it now, it's the city that's taking down this district. So I, I, I wanna hear something different, I wanna see something implemented, I'm tired of waiting. And I wanna see fair and balanced taxation. I wanna see the nonprofits that own forty, forty-five percent of this tax base kick in. I'm tired of meaningless mission statements, you know? I mean, I, it, it doesn't mean anything. So, and the city has to be reassessed, the city, and I know you don't have anything to do with it, but you could certainly send off the way you feel, you could have a non-binding vote because these stupid landlords are taking the, what you see is what you get. Go over here by the park, you'll see the red cups, they don't clean it up. So, you know, uh, other than the basketball team, there's no bright spots, you know? On any given day, any student can reach the top, no matter where they go, no matter what the obstacles are. That's not the problem. The problem is, are we getting what we paid for? Is there value there? And I don't think we're getting a lot of value, I think we're getting the same thing. So thank you very much. And, uh, yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come up and speak relative to the budget? Seeing none, we'll move on to.
No, I'm sorry. Hi, guys. Just so the saints, this, welcome me for school board. Hey, uh, real quick, question, I don't know, maybe I should wait for the other page, but for transportation, how much, do we, how much do we pay the, um, city of Binghamton for transporting the students, um, the high school students to come school?
Uh, we can answer that afterwards, this is really meant to be just one-way communication to get feedback, but if you stick around after, we'll, we'll get you that.
All right, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing on the budget and proceed to the third read of revised policy seventy-two, twenty-one, the graduation policy. Uh, this is up for adoption tonight when we go on the general G resolutions. Uh, we looked at this last month and in the preceding months. So, uh, by now everybody's had a chance to look at it multiple times and, uh, you know what the rationale is for the revision. Uh, are there any comments or questions relative to seventy-two, twenty-one? Seeing none, we'll go to the next item, which is a presentation on the Smart Schools Project. So welcome to Tim Miller and Alex Ackerman.
Before Tim and Alex start to talk about the investment plan, to give some board members a context that I think have been working on this smart plan for, seven years? Eight years?
Yeah.
Eight or seven years. I mean, we have a totally different board than seven or eight years, uh, years ago. It's been a while. So to set, to set the stage, these are money that was allocated to school districts in a lump sum for which you have to go through a process to access for, to support technology as well as to probably use some of the money over the, over the years from pre-kindergarten classrooms. Um, mostly, mostly technology use. So, uh, this is the last, I believe, of our smart investments.
I think we'll have a little money.
Maybe, 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 maybe there'll be another one as well, maybe we can number five. So with that, um, uh, do you introduce yourselves as well, Tim and Alex, in terms of? So with that, do introduce yourselves as well, Tim and Alex, in terms of your positions in support of the district.
Yeah, so Tim Milner, I'm the assistant director at the South Central RIC, and I've been involved in Binghamton for a number of years, was the IT project coordinator here for a number of years, and, you know, still involved in capital projects and other things here in the district.
And I'm Alexandra Ackerman. I'm the administrator for managed technology services from the RIC. I'm stationed here at Binghamton as their director of technology.
Thank you. So like Dr. Thompson mentioned, back in 2014, the voters of New York State passed the Smart School Bond Act, which was a $2 million bond and was allocated on Binghamton's piece of that, was just over $5.2 million. And to date, there's still no deadline to use those funds, although we've used... We've had multiple projects over the years that we've used those funds. There are four categories there, listed underneath there, that those funds need to be used in one of those four areas. So the three previous projects we've done, you know, we've used it to, when we first rolled out 101, to enhance the infrastructure, the network, the wireless infrastructure. We've also used it for increased building security for students and staff. And then our most recent one, years ago, we installed new interactive TV panels throughout the district. And then this next one is going to be to, again, to enhancing technology to be able to provide voice-over internet protocol phones in Thomas Jefferson. So this project is really to provide the cabling and the backbone for this project. It is a... It's a project we're doing in other buildings today, but, you know, didn't have the funding to complete this in a D-Ray 2 project, so we're looking to do this through Smart Schools. We have taken all the steps to this point, so the project is ready to go. We're looking for approval from the board. The estimated cost is about $165,000 to provide this wiring at Thomas Jefferson. And then, you know, again, this was posted on the website April 1st. You know, once we obtained approval from the board, we're going to go ahead and submit this, and then that will start the process so that we can do this work at Thomas Jefferson. Any questions at all?
Just to provide a little clarity around my voiceover, I think that was a little hard for me on the capital project to say, "What is this, what do we do this?" It allows for our phone system to be more responsive in the emergency circumstances. Teachers will also have a lot more variability to make different types of calls, have voicemail and those kinds of things right out of their own classroom as well, and the procedures that we put into place. But we put it into the capital projects, we made the buildings, but as we look at the capital projects and as they grow, we want consistency and be able to make sure that that can be available to Thomas Jefferson as well.
How long will it take for this to start?
The project itself for approval?
The project itself?
Project itself, probably four to six weeks, once it's started. It is a quite lengthy approval process, so it'll take some time to get approval. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Next up in special reports, we have a first read of revised policy 6551, as pertains to the Family and Medical E-Act. You'll notice there are numerous red lines and insertions of text, basically things that come down from the federal law and give a lot more specificity to the process that we need to follow. Are there any questions or comments on revised policy 6551? So this is the first read again, so it'll come up next month in June, and then this would be a third read and adoption at the July 4th meeting. Seeing none, we'll proceed to the next item, which is a discussion on the student board member selection process, so Dr. Thompson and I will lead this part of the meeting.
I just had, I included in, you know, a board run, but here's a physical copy, New York State School Boards Association, a recognition that effective July 1, all school boards in New York State are when required to bring aboard a student or board member, an exophysty or not voting board member. Back in 2005, the Binghamton City School District went after the public, as a means at the time that was still available under law, and had a public vote to bring on a student board. So we've been fortunate to be experiencing this for 20 years. However, it does give us an opportunity, because we've had one, and we've been functioning in a certain way now for many, many years, to reconsider and ask for ourselves, this is the way in which we want to proceed. So I included in the front some of the advantages of that to convincing us that we need to have a student board member, since it's not only a requirement, but we've been engaging and embracing our student government board president each and every year since the inception of having a student board member, but also just to kind of whet your appetite and get you started to think about how we may want to proceed next year. So there are some resources that have yet to come out. I did sit on NISB's Student Board Member webinar. I believe I've shared that link, if you're interested in sitting and listening to that. They had some students from the National School Boards Association in other states where they sat on school boards and some things that they've done down south, you could hear, or south, southern portion of New York. And that was very interesting to hear the perspective. There are some sample policies, and so the recommendation is that we do have a policy, which can simply say, there'll be a school board, a student board member sitting on our board. I believe we never added that to our policy, because we have to have a public vote, and that was the means in which we have a student board member on our team. But I have those samples, and then, just as I do each year, a meeting with board president, and I'll make the recommendations, and my recommendation will be to add some leadership to the same policy. The procedures, though, that we follow, I'm going to recommend that those become regulations that sit in our board government's document, because that's where we have all the information on how we function as a board, and so that allows us to reconsider each year, not have to go through a policy committee to talk about, you know, how they become elected, the kinds of training that we might want to do with school or with students, student board members. There are other levels of engagement that we may be asking of our student schooler member. It does take effect July 1, and we can, in our July report, we can say that, or if we're dismissing or not requiring a student board member to serve in the summer, for example. Probably would appreciate that, I'm sure. So it's effective September, which is what we do typically every year. On May 13, New York State School Board Association is supposed to release some further guidance on guidelines, so I think having that in hand may also be helpful for us to make some decisions. It also gives us time in board development sessions to kind of tease this out a little bit more in terms of the kinds of things you like to see set in place for bringing a student, school board member, and their engagement. So the last page of my hand now just kind of goes through, as I was listening to the webinar, the things to be considering and thinking about, so I think this is kind of the preamble to what their guidance is going to come out in the year. And I just, for your review, listen, kind of what our current practices are. So for example, our current practice for selection is to take the high school president to the student council and have them sit on our school board each month. It was interesting, NISB did a survey, about 20% about school districts that have a student board member, which is about half, almost half, 300 school boards in New York State have a student member currently. Other places, the principal of the high school appointed someone, and other places, there was a special election for that student board member at the high school at the same time you could do a student government. So it wasn't necessarily the high school president, but somebody, like a special seat, just like they have the president, vice president, secretary, treasurer, and the student school board members, that are still part of the council, but didn't have that additional responsibility of being the president of the school, of the student board, which also comes with a lot of other responsibilities. So I'm going to pause here, I had a brief conversation with Rae, so she didn't log in, or roll those surprises, and just ask her to talk a little bit about, you know, the responsibility of being here and listening. She and I talk quite frequently about, you know, things we're having at the high school or so on, but just with that responsibility, so you can hear, so we have the pleasure in having a student board member here to give us some insight into what the time commitment has been, just specifically sitting here. So you turn it over to Rae, do you want?
I'm a little footshod, but... I would say for the time commitment, since I have been doing this since my junior year, call and get, and it's all fun, we all did it together. It wasn't necessarily crazy. I feel like it depends on the student, how involved the student is, how many extra careers they have, or any jobs, anything like that. For me, committing like two hours every day, a month, to come to the board meetings, wasn't necessarily a lot. I would say unless it's like overlapping, like I'm all about alumni association as a student representative, so if we met today, and then coming straight here after that, that could be something to see a lot. So it just really depends on the student.
Questions you have with Rae?
I feel like we haven't used you as much as we should. So I guess, and I was even thinking about when you were talking about like changing the lockdowns, like having a student voice would have been really important in that, and I think that's all of our responsibilities to ask for. So I guess my question is kind of like, were there times when you felt like you wanted to speak up or be more involved in things? And what are your suggestions for next year for whoever does it? I feel like we almost need to have a routine maybe a little bit when we get to certain things, making sure the student representative can, you know, give input without having to, I don't know, maybe like speak up themselves, you know, like have to take the responsibility of doing it, but then we make it a part of it.
Yeah, I think that's a great question. I'm sometimes in meetings, like when somebody can say something, like, "Oh, I wish I could comment on that." But also, I would say, like, we give a student a mic, but also be like, you know, reacting to news. So I would say, yes, there's time where I would want to speak up about something, so maybe just having a discussion like after, like asking the student for their input.
Rae, just being mindful of, this is a big one, being mindful when you're personally selected, of representativeness, in other words, or whoever sits there represents not just high school, but K through 12 all students. So having that perspective of, as an individual, you have a particular perspective, but realizing that you speak for, if, almost 5,000 students, which is an impossible task, getting a feeling for how your peers, how they feel about things, and that will be a challenge for whoever sits there, being conversant on issues that we face.
Yes, that's true. I would say throughout my, me being on the school board, I haven't thought much about elementary schools and middle schools, but luckily I do have siblings that are in, and so that's a benefit for them, if you want to excel, so I still hear that kind of...
Thank you.
Just a couple of comments, and before anything else, Rae, I just want to say thank you for taking the time to be here.
For a long two years.
Yes, two years. We realize that the students that serve in this role often get asked to do multiple roles, like this, you mentioned, the alumni association is another involvement, plus on their own, they seek out a lot of things, so this has to fit into their busy lives, same as all of us, and so we realize that's a heavy commitment and not one that you take lightly. I realize that this is a tremendous opportunity. It has been very, very under-leveraged since the time I've been on the board, and finally being in a position now to give some more conscious thought to this. And it's a shame that we didn't do it sooner, and a big push to do it is because there's this state-level requirement now for everyone to do it. We're ahead of the curve, and we shouldn't have stayed there. So shame on us to an extent that we didn't think of a way to more meaningfully engage the students, but we will definitely get on that going forward. And, you know, and one of the things about this that I feel strongly about is that, you know, a lot of times, I remember how it was in high school, it's like, "Do honor society, do this, do key club." It looks good on the resume, it looks good on the transfer, the teachers will always say that, but the value of this, I think, is so much more, and I hope the students will see that the time is very, very well worth it, because the lessons can't be taught in a classroom setting. And I think about, like, my first exposure to Board of Education Service, not, wasn't serving on it necessarily, or being a student board trustee, because you have the full rights of a trustee, but I was doing a college internship broadcasting Ann Arbor Michigan's Board of Education meetings, and I was like, I learned a lot, and I didn't realize I would use it, like, some of that here, but that was a good introduction to see how organizations work, how community engagements work, building influence through relationships and building coalitions, what are sensitive issues, what are non-sensitive issues, and how to engage with the public to get anything done. And there are issues they dealt with back 30-some years ago, where everybody was contentious, even though the political climate wasn't as toxic as contentious as what we deal with here. And you had speakers that had, you know, equal or greater passion than John, you know, coming up and multiple speakers, and how to deal with those voices and move forward. So this is a tremendous opportunity, I think, for anyone, and we're going to do the best that we can, and the beauty is we get to decide as a board what that's going to be, to make that meaningful. So the last thing we want is somebody to come here, feel they just watch for two hours, and go home and say, "I could have been studying, I could have been doing anything else, I could have given time to an activity, I could have spent time with my family, I could have just taken a nap." Instead, we're going to make this a more meaningful service opportunity going forward. So I just want to say thank you so much, and I feel like I see you in everything, and you do so many things, and we're blessed to have you with us.
Thank you so much.
And any suggestions you have, I hope you'll give to Dr. Thompson when you meet with her, or, you know, just reflect on the last two years, anything that we can do better, and I'll say just to every single one of these people for a recommendation, whenever we meet.
I would say that I think the mic is probably scattered for all of us, the first time we sat here, and I feel like every time we've spoken, we've always heard really great things from you, so thank you for being here, and we'll leave you to do your...
She's a trans, and I'm going to share her new, she's going to be singing Man United music on the stage. I was going to say, fine tune, I know there's an opportunity with some of this.
College should be around the world, yay!
So this is really just one piece of a conversation that certainly wanted to carry across the multiple meetings. We just wanted to begin this discussion tonight, to kind of set the table for this discussion that's going to follow as far as clarifying the role and the expectations for the person who's going to be in the seat going forward, so that way really it's a win-win for all of us, and that's really the goal of mine. Next is the last public comment portion of the meeting. Would anybody like to speak, if it's not, but I have to offer up? Let's move on to the certified C resolutions, new business superintendent recommendations, and... I'd like to call for a motion on resolution C1 through, C9. I'm sorry, oh, you want to come up and speak in a public comment?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, we'll reopen, yes.
Sorry, that kind of went a little fast, I didn't realize that I had to, I remember putting my hand up.
Sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. So, yeah, I'm a parent of a ninth grader.
I'm sorry, your name is?
My name is Gigi Marcus, I'm a parent of a ninth grader at Binghamton High School. Boy, I'm having a hard time getting in contact with Mr. Richmond, that's pretty disappointing. We've had some issues with my son, unfortunately, at the high school, so I've been trying to set a meeting up for, to find out what some restorative practices that should be implemented at the high school. I've been hearing a lot of comments from his friends, even friends that are also of different races, about some of the language and the self-esteem of some of the young black boys there, and they're feeling empty, they feel that there's a lack of support, and they don't feel like a lot of the kids are being treated the same. I'm not proud of the behavior that my son has been displaying, however, there's a root cause. We are both parents that are involved in our children's lives, but we don't feel that we have the support that we need when it comes to the principal, so I'm concerned. And that's why I'm here, and I'm also a social worker, so I believe when my son puts snaps, and I follow him, and he says that he's feeling empty in his room, and I'm getting counseling for him, and he's in counseling now, and we're doing all that we need to do, and if he's not this star athlete that you tend to really emphasize, I'm glad that the basketball team is making great strides, but when my son is making these comments that he's not a star player and he doesn't have these... that he's not a star player, and he doesn't have these glowing grades, and he feels like teachers aren't, don't really care, and I can't get a hold of the principal after one, two, three, four calls, asking for what restorative practices are being implemented in the district that I served as a PTA member for years, Girl Scout troop parent for years, where do I land? I used to come to these meetings, and I stopped, because I didn't think that the district cared. Now my son is being called a nigger, and I had to have an appeal, because he was taking up for other kids. Did he commit a violent act? Sure he did, taking up for other kids. Then he had to bring in some phone records from other children, saying that, no, no one interviewed me, no one said anything, no one on his behalf. They all were being called the same things, and kids were too afraid to speak up. So it went on, and other things are happening, and then he just doesn't like school anymore. Why can I get a hold of Mr. Richmond? Maybe I should be more involved, but I don't feel that the district cares. Where is representation for people like my son? Unless they're a growing athlete, do you care? Teachers don't care, some of them, they're ready to retire. Where is the restorative practices for children of color, young black men, young black girls? Are they feeling the same? What are we doing? Please have them call me back, or I've been blasting my Facebook.
Is there anyone else who wishes to come up and speak during this part of the public comment portion meeting? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close and proceed to the superintendent's recommendations on certified C resolutions, and this time I'll call for a motion on resolutions C1 through C9. Everybody all wants. Moved by Lisa, seconded by Carrie. Doesn't appear that there is, so I think we're in procedural roll call vote.
Ms. Callahan?
Yes.
Ms. Middleton?
Yeah.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Button? Mr. Supercell?
Yes.
Before you move on to the next set of resolutions, if I could please introduce, and if you could stand, because we just approved your resolutions for appointment, and congratulate first our new elementary principal of Thea Roosevelt School, Nicole Coon. Our new elementary principal of Horace Mann Elementary School, Jackie Cash. Our new Horace Mann superintendent. And then our new middle school principal of Westmore Elementary School, Maggie Thank you. Thank you, welcome on board.
Certified Snipman CS resolutions, could I have a motion, please, on resolutions CS1 and CS2? Moved by Albert, seconded by Shontae. We have a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Callahan?
Yes.
Ms. Middleton?
Yeah.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Button?
Yes.
Mr. Supercell?
Yes. Non-certified NC resolutions, could I have a motion, please, on resolutions NC1 through NC8? Moved by Shontae, seconded by Carrie. And we have two retirements to read. I will take the first one. This is 2025-5-NC1 retirement of Lawrence Caston. Whereas Lawrence Caston has served the Binghamton City School District faithfully and continuously since August 8, 1988, as a 12-month teaching assistant and the director of special projects and community services, starting in 1991. Whereas Lawrence Caston has submitted his intention to retire effective at the end of the day, May 16, 2025. Carrie, could you read NC2, my favorite?
Whereas Carol Raymond has served the Binghamton City School District faithfully and continuously since January 3, 2012, as food services helper. And whereas Carol Raymond has submitted their intention to retire effective at the end of the day on June 20, 2025. Now therefore be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that the Board of Education does and hereby accepts their request for retirement. And be it further resolved, the Board of Education extends to Lawrence Caston and Carol Raymond its sincere thanks, and the thanks of the community for their efforts on behalf of the students and of the district. And be it further resolved, that the Board of Education extends to them its sincere and best wishes for a long, happy, and prosperous retirement.
Thank you, and I think we're ready to go.
Ms. Callahan?
Yes.
Ms. Middleton?
Yeah.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Button?
Yes.
Mr. Supercell?
Yes. And now the general G resolutions, could I have a motion, please, on G1 through G10? Moved by Carrie, seconded by Albert. And with that, I think we're ready to proceed to a roll call vote.
Ms. Callahan?
Yes.
Ms. Middleton?
Yeah.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Button? Yes, Mr. Supercell?
Yes. So I'll take this to updates from the superintendent.
First and foremost, I want to share with the board that this week, to remind us that we are celebrating teacher appreciation across the district. I've seen wonderful things happening across the buildings. At the other chair tomorrow, they're going to be receiving on behalf of the district's patriot pride. So I also brought a copy for each of you, a car magnet. You can read the message I sent out with a couple puns stuck in there about sticking with us, being drawn to the job. Actually, that PR, that quote is a bit... But the car magnet, which is fantastic, and then some nice stickers to place on laptops or wire bottles or whatever, so we just appreciate all the work of all of our educators, and there's the celebration is happening. If we could give a round of applause for teachers just in general, because they've been here so many years. Thank you, thank you. I also wanted to mention that state math test, it was taking place this week. I believe the ELA testing, I can't remember if that happened before the last one, or just after it, but there were some technical difficulties. I think we were okay today with the math assessment, so that's good. I did reach out to small cities, as well as our district superintendent about when you're in a small city school district, and kids really, all kids care, of course, to do the best for the teachers, but that anxiety that can be associated with test taking, and with ELA testing, going to try and take it, and technology failed, and I went back on the second day, and failed again, and then we had to push off to the third date, that there's an impact. And I asked, I called for accountability in the sense that I wanted to query the superintendent, where did it happen? Would it impact? How many days it didn't impact you? So I haven't given up that fight, but I know students did their best, for sure.
I ask the question, I think we had talked about before the last meeting, that there were more opt-outs because of, or you were all looking at how many opt-outs?
Jennifer, I'm waiting for you to give me that data, I will send that. I believe, among the principals I spoke to, and I didn't speak with everybody about their opt-outs, that they had very few, like their attendance was actually good in the end. I think the legislature week helped, we tried for day three, which I wouldn't have allowed to do anyway. That would have been horrific, but Jennifer has all the data with ELA and the math, I'll send that to the board. Thank you. But you can see that, yes, thank you. But thank you to pre-K through grade eight for all the work supporting the math test. And, oh, I also went to the guidance department this week, last week, during the appeal of professional learning time and social workers, so to talk about the exemption that now exists for region's exams for extenuating circumstances, to provide clarity around that. So this just came out from the commissioner, allowing a rule for best be a process in place. The student has to have demonstrated that they know the content, they pass the content before they go into the region. So this is not for a student who's not passing, and then they try to sit for the regions and pass the regions, therefore pass the course. This is not for that condition. This is they are obtained enough content, and the teacher can certify, yeah, they passed my class. But they've experienced an extenuating circumstance that prevents them from sitting for that regions, for some reason. Where this came from, whereas there were some students that were experiencing some medical difficulty or significant medical difficulty, maybe passing all year and then diagnosed with an illness and have to be on an intravenous treatment, and couldn't be there for the regions, and then the thought was, they have to sit, wait a year, and go into August and sit for a year, that seems ridiculous. And so that was kind of the impetus, but as we've been adding to the reasons why, right, three days before a student's family member is arrested in a home, you know, it's a traumatic event, I think they need to focus on an exam that they have to take in 24 hours. And we sacked down the process, some examples and some non-examples, just to prepare. So I just want to let the board know that we are acting on that, because it became real in March for this June. So we can do that, and I'd be happy to share the data with the board, like how many students do we actually enact the exemption? The interesting thing is, it could be a ninth grader sitting for an algebra exam and get the exemption. Even though it used to be, well, there's more opportunities to take that exam, right? They can take it again in August, and in January, or sophomore year, and so on, it's one example, they don't have to worry about taking it again. I think this is also a move by the part of the commissioner to ensure multiple paths for graduation, because that starts to become enacted next year, starting with the ninth graders. This is going to become part of, you know, part of that movement, if you will. I also wanted to congratulate Mary Ann, but also this weekend, we had a half marathon runner at the table with his wife, Steve Supercell, ran the bridge run, and I was did a fabulous show, although I was there at the end to cheer him on, and somebody needed some help, so I turned my head for two seconds across the line. But it was a great event, we had our, some of the students volunteer for the bridge run, it was great to see, you know, students coming out and supporting our community that way. And I also wanted to mention that we have a community member, I think she just left, a parent, Allison Johnson, who reached out to the district and noticed that over the past few years, we've not had a candidate forum for anybody running for the Board of Education. And that's because we used to have a PTA council that would facilitate that, and as a separate entity, right, not the board doing it, or the district, or the bureau, but looking like we're interfering with that process. And so she said, well, if I can have some support on what happened in the past, I'd be happy to facilitate. So the Thomas Jefferson Parent Advocacy Group is going to be hosting a candidate, board candidate evening, I believe it's on May 19, at Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. And so if they pass, when we've had those events, the whole board is also been invited to attend, if you'd like to hear. The way that we facilitate it is that we, the LA NC, who will soon invite the candidates up, they'll introduce themselves, very much with, they'll be sharing the information that's in the budget newsletter, and then there'll be a series of questions that are asked. I put her in contact with Cara Holly, who used to run that very smooth ship, so I'm excited that we have somebody interested in facilitating that, and bringing that back to our district, which is fantastic. And then I also wanted to mention that federal funding. So I just received an email from the American Association for Schools Superintendents, and some insight on what's happening with proposal for the fiscal year '26 of federal funding. And it appears that it's Title II and Title IV, that's a threat. And that Title I, this is what I'm hearing now, is intended to move forward for next year. If all of our title funding was to be removed, and we, and not flow through the state, that's about 70 positions in our school district. That is, would be detrimental, it's our interventionists, our social workers, our school stuff, I mean, there's a lot of support for students that's in that funding. So I know our education department is rattling with that, and that's part of the reason that we have a late budget, is we're trying to figure out what's the reality around this, and, you know, how could we end up supporting districts differently for that? But as I learn more information, particularly as it pertains to those grants, I'll be sure to share, share that with the board as well, and that's all.
I would say, not for the next meeting, but at some point, and maybe it's the end of the summer, but the conversation about high school kids being able to be accepted for certain things, like maybe think about it, also the profile of the graduate, which has changed significantly. I had some discussion about maybe like our position in the board on 3/8 testing, and how, especially as you see eight-year-olds on computers finding math symbols and things like that. But I think there's a point of things that are developmentally appropriate or not, and just because things have gone a certain way, doesn't mean it's always the right thing. And I feel like almost right now, high school students are going one way almost, and we're going the opposite way with our youngest kids. And kids with 3/8, I don't think have choices for exception, unless something like, you know, their parent off the mound or something. But I think testing kids that young, I don't, I, anyway. So I know I have very strong personal opinions about it, but I also think we need to be keeping up with what's going on around us, and our elementary kids, more than anything, should be reflecting profile of the graduate, whereas global student, social emotional learning, all those things, to me, are very, are more important even than a one-time state test. I get that our funding and everything else, I know at some point you can't love everything, but I think we need to have like a philosophical conversation about what's good for our kids.
I would like to just simply add to that, it would be very interesting, because there's no federal funding, that there's no federal requirements for assessment and accountability, so that really isn't what we need as a state. And I remember, yeah, yeah.
Like, we're not giving money for it.
I remember the days we gave the PEPE tests, everybody out there, remember the PEPE test? Fourth and fifth grade, yeah, fourth and fifth grade, it was in the third, we did it at the third. And so it was an assessment to just be able to jury yourself in terms of your educational programs against others, because it was more of a standardized test, and that was a, so, yeah, I didn't know to have a conversation with Carrie and Steve on it, but then, but...
Thanks, I'm sorry, I was not like waving, I don't mean to like frogside anybody, I just...
No, 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 no.
I mean, there's a lot...
And also, I will give them a math test tomorrow, like, it's just all me and you think about it.
Yeah, absolutely.
You got this.
So that's great, and among the small amount of housekeeping items, as we go quickly through, before we adjourn, we had sent in our NISBA resolution text regarding the lockdown drills, what we had approved, the ones we approved several months ago, and so we should be good to go with that being put before the entire association, when those resolutions are sent out a little bit later on in the year. Once we have the board elections in the books, and we're back to the full strength of seven board members, we decided that would be the most appropriate time to dive in and continue some of the board development work that we've done, with a session that I'll facilitate on, board vision and board goals. And so we've collected a lot of great comments from everyone over the last couple of sessions, and I felt ready to try to synthesize this finally into something that we can work with, set the tone for the coming year, and just rather better to do it once more altogether, instead of doing it the six of us, and then say, oh, by the way, here's already decided that the seventh person just didn't really seem particularly fair. And I'm excited to see that this candidate forum is a thing again, and it was back my first reading in 2019, and we didn't have one last year, but it was really incredibly informative for me as a candidate, only been to one, it was the year that I ran, to learn more about the other people who are on the ballot. And, you know, as I would say to anyone who voted publicly, there were a ton of people here watching in person, or even on the stream, is that you deserve to know the qualifications of who's on the ballot. And this is certainly one way that you can, you can do that, and get specific questions answered. We're all going to get the mail, or I've seen it around, I don't think I got mine yet, but it has the board bios that all of us had to write, it's limited to 500 words, so there's so much you can do in one page, and it doesn't come to life the same way that a public forum in person does. So I've encouraged people not only to turn out for that, but to tell friends, because it wasn't very well trafficked either, which is a shame, because we made a lot of great conversations, but only a small amount of people got to witness. And this segues into the data of the board, the budget vote, which is two weeks from tonight, May 20, and the polls are open 11 to 8, and the polling locations will be on website, and the printed materials circulated to come. And our next meeting is June 10, the school recognition for Binghamton High School, we sort of kind of had that tonight, but it was a little different, this will give us a different angle, and have an overview of the summer programming and the policies that were not adopted tonight, we'll come up with another plus other matters that are important at the time. And with that, I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn. Moved by...